Yeah, and so much of what we were doing were drastically different again.
We will call to order the October 12th, 2023 Board of Trustees Special Called Meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, would you please explain the purpose of this meeting before we go to the adoption of the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Not just for me, but for the public to please clarify why we are here this morning.
Yes, ma'am. On September the 25th, we held executive session and then open session voting per advice of General Counsel. Based on an opinion from the Solicitor General in the Attorney General's office and out of an abundance of caution to assure that we are in full compliance with FOIA, we are conducting today's special called meeting. It was scheduled quickly to help ease all of the many expressed concerns and a desire to show that we as a board listen.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I second.
A motion to adopt.
Since the posting of today's legal meeting, expectations are very high that this board will use it as an opportunity to help restore transparency. This meeting corrects a FOIA era that's been noticed by the Attorney General and a command from the Governor McMaster to follow the law. The expectation this morning from educators, principals, parents, the community are that this governing board will demonstrate a commitment to learners by collaborating with leaders to uphold the institution's priorities and to drive continuous improvement. I've just quoted Cognia Standard 8. More specifically, the expectation for this board to address the issues and votes, not just fix the technicalities of the September 25th meeting. The people have repeatedly and persistently let us know that they want this board to, one, reinstate Dr. Galian to his role as superintendent while the investigation runs concurrent and return to work. Two,
Madam Chair, I move for orders of the day. A point of order is not a time to pontificate.
I'm speaking. Approve Ms. Michelle Simmons, a highly qualified educator, as the chief academic officer. Three, reinstate the CCSD Council Advisory Committee members who were removed prior to the expiration of their terms. There are so many letters, emails, newspaper, and TV articles telling us there is nothing wrong with changing your heart and mind on previous votes. Today could be the day we definitely start the path of setting things right with the district and its community of learners, educators, and parents. May it be so, and amen.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I might move.
I second.
Grabowski, is there a second?
I seconded.
The question?
I already seconded.
Oh, she has a question on the agenda? Okay.
Madam Chair, would you please explain, um, item number two, A and two B, renew? What is the definition of renew?
Continue per the previous vote, but we do it with complete transparency and agenda, um, according to FOIA.
Madam Chair, if the Attorney General's opinion is that the meeting was, um, held, if it was illegal, then no actions. It's moot. So therefore, it's not renewed. It should be a new action.
Miss, Miss Chair, can I read? Can I respond? If you read the letter, it was just that. In fact, Attorney General said that a court would have to review it to make the opinion. It was an opinion of the Attorney General.
If we are acting on the opinion, we cannot pick and choose what we are going to use. If we are using this opinion to have a new meeting, then we have to have all new things up in this meeting. We cannot use the opinion and then pretend that what happened in the old, the previous meeting, it still stands that we are just going to renew it.
I did not call the meeting.
I'm asking for a definition of your action, renew action, what action? If the old meeting-
Previous vote.
We, it cannot, we cannot renew something that we are here to do over.
That was against FOIA.
This was a FOIA violation?
We will bring, um, the motions up and that we will be open to debate and people can vote the same or different. So a second for the adopting the agenda was from a voice on the screen, but I couldn't determine who.
Bailey.
Ms. Bailey. Okay. And we will vote now, Ms. Bowles. To adopt the agenda. Ms. Bailey, um, if you're not connected, you're, you're computer to vote, you may voice vote?
Yes. Could you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we did. Thank you. And the motion passes. Is there a motion to authorize the board chair to consult with legal counsel and Dr. Galian's legal counsel to select a firm for the investigation of allegations involving the superintendent?
I move.
Second.
And I, I have-
I was recognizing Ms. Waters.
I was going to make the motion, but I'm fine with whoever's on record.
Okay, um. So that was Ms. Watley and Mr. Grabowski?
I think it was Mr. Kelly.
Or the other way around?
I think it was Mr. Kelly and Watley.
Oh, okay. So who made the motion?
I did.
Ms. Watley and Mr. Kelly, you seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I do have some questions.
All right. May I read one statement, Ms. Guthridge, and then we'll, and then we'll go on. Um, so at the suggestion of Ms. Guthridge, our parliamentarian, we will follow Roberts Rules of Orders for discussion today and going forward. After a motion is made and it's time for discussion, we will alternate between comments being in favor of a motion or opposed to a motion. And in the interest of efficiency, rather than restating an opinion, uh, you may say ditto if you agree with the statement. And for clarification also, Ms. Guthridge had suggested we draw numbers for seats and we started that Monday and did it again today.
Okay, sure. Um, you know, of course, I made the motion the first time and did so, uh, in earnest and hoping that the investigation would be made a lot smoother by the inclusion of Dr. Galian's counsel. However, I do think, um, there's a big issue with revoting on this for me today, given that, and it's just a unique circumstance that it has already started. Uh, we haven't received a report, but in attempting to do my due diligence, I did ask how the invest- investigation was going. And it's my understanding that in two weeks, Dr. Galian hadn't actually been interviewed, nor has Ms. Simmons, who was actually identified. And so I'm concerned about the timing and what's actually going on with this investigation. Um, and so I just don't feel comfortable voting on this, uh, in this moment because the very thing that I feared seems to actually be happening, that there's, I don't want to call it obstruction, but that there's something amiss with the investigation.
All right. Um, is there a pro for the motion?
I'll speak to that, Ms., Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important as trustees that we support all of our staff, all of our students and, uh, administrators, and to not investigate a complaint of this nature is a dereliction of our duty.
Um, is there an opposition of a different sort?
I will speak to that, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Originally, I too voted, uh, for the investigation because I felt as though he would be cleared. However, since then, as Trustee Waters said, uh, this has been prolonged and we need to get our superintendent back to work. Let me say, and for the record, this district does not have protocol, a follow protocol. There, this employee did not go to her direct report. She came directly to the superintendent and the board. There should be district protocol in place that if there's any complaint, that an employee should go to their direct report. They should then go to ER. If ER cannot handle it, they should go to HR. This employee should not have been allowed to come directly to the superintendent and to the board.
Ms. Roberson, I'm afraid that is not addressing the motion. Um, is there a call for the question? Is there a call for the question?
I'll call for the question. I was going to make another point, but I, I think, you know, we, it, we hired a firm that Dr. Galian's attorneys agreed on and this attorney has over 50 years' experience in employee, um, situations and investigating things of this nature. I, I just think it's prudent to allow the expert to do what they do. So I'll call for the question.
I actually do have another comment.
And we do have an opportunity to have two rounds.
Excuse me. Um, we need to keep the debate going, um.
A separate point, yes. Um, uh, uh, another thing that troubles me with this motion in this moment is that we need to clarify what, uh, is the field of play for Dr. Galian while on paid administrative leave. I also understand that an attorney, who I don't know to be the general counsel, sent an email to Dr. Galian saying that he wasn't to be on any premises after he attended the Burt game. And, and I don't understand why that happened.
Well, right now, the, the, the motion we're voting on is for the two attorneys.
Well, no, but it's for, it's whether to renew the investigation. And my point is, if he's going to be, if we're going to be investigating this, what is he to be doing in the midst of it? And if we want to get, if you want me to restate my question in two B, I'm fine with it. But it all does go for me toward why, if we're protecting him in this investigation, what is he to be doing and how is it a danger that he be at a football game? And so I'm just not understanding what is the rule of play for him inside of this investigation? And again, I'm fine to have you answer that in two B, but it sort of goes together for me.
Okay.
I also have a question.
Excuse me. Um, Dr. Temple?
I also have a question regarding the investigation.
And, and did, I cannot answer questions about the investigation because I'm not involved in it. These are questions that need to go to the attorneys. And, um, the attorney that is, um, handling the contract with Dr. Galian is the attorney that we hired to negotiate, Ms. Sherri Blackburn. And, um, then the attorney, Dr. Galian has four attorneys. The one that has been, um, communicating with us, uh, as you know, is Ms. Nancy Bloodgood. But these are questions for the attorneys, not questions that I can answer. So I would suggest you're reaching out to them, but right now we are debating this one motion.
I'm sorry, I just don't, so are you going to answer my question now or on two B?
Well, I think I just answered it.
No, no, but someone directed the attorney to send that letter.
About that, Ms. Waters. You'll have to ask the attorney.
So I'll bring my question up again on two B because I think it's important that we give direction in this situation.
Okay. All right. Ms. Roberson?
Thank you for recognizing me. I would like to speak to someone from HR. I believe that we are talking about an investigation. The district should have protocols in place for, before we move outside to an investigation. What protocols do we have in place for in-house investigation? And someone from HR needs to answer that question.
And that is a question we can answer, but right now, an investigation is in process and it, um, needs to continue.
Madam Chair, before, we are talking about the motion on the floor is whether or not we should have an investigation. So we are in debates. My question is, what is the district's protocol for internal investigation? We cannot move on. We are in debates. Um, so we are, we are at the district office. Where is the chief of HR?
He is taking care of his mother.
Where is the assistant chief of HR? I'm going to go down and tell, we get to someone from HR to give me the protocol for in-house investigation.
Um.
The district is wasting taxpayers' money on an outside investigation when we did not allow this employee to use the in-house investigation protocols. We cannot dis, we cannot disregard that this board is an error.
Ms. Ms. Roberson, the way I understand it, please, so you, uh, we can be, hear each other. The way I understand it is we voted for the investigation. We did not ask for an internal look at it, and so it proceeded.
The meeting was considered by illegal. We cannot keep going back to September 25th. If we are here eight o'clock this morning to do this over, why do we keep going back to something that was not done correctly? We are here this morning in debate and I'm asking my question and I'm asking for someone from HR to answer my question for an internal investigation.
I, I think that, that can be done after this meeting is a one-on-one.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Do we have anyone from HR here or should I ask, um?
Madam Chair, if I may.
I'm sorry, there's no one from HR here, Ms. Roberson. If you, if we had known ahead of time, we could have planned for that.
Madam Chair, if I may. Madam Chair, I'm, um, I'm, I'm sorry, the deputy soup, the, the acting superintendent is sitting here. Please, where is someone from HR? We are in, we are in the district office. Where's someone from HR? There's absolutely nobody from HR here? Madam Chair, if I may interject.
Mrs. Roberson, he's out on sick leave.
Who is under that person?
We don't have an assistant chief of HR, Mrs. Roberson, and the directors in that office are not here. We have, uh, we have, um, Oscar Douglas here, but I don't.
Madam Chair.
I have the floor, Mr. Kelly.
May, may we, may I have just one moment, please, for consult with the parliamentarian? So, um, we will. Ms. Huggins, Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Mrs. McKinney.
Sure.
Roberson, um, and trustees, uh, Oscar Douglas, who is our executive director of employee relations, and I consulted. And we are going to need to work with the chief of HR and general counsel. The policy, um, there is a policy about employee grievances, but it's not clear as to how the matter is handled when the superintendent is involved. So we will refer back to the chief of HR and general counsel. Having, not having as many details as some of you may about the, the nature of the claim.
Right. Thank you. And, and, um, on, and in a positive expression of supporting this motion, an email was sent to the trustees and when an email is sent to us, I think it's our responsibility to address it. Um, that, that is just, just like the, um, but I will call for the question. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we're talking about, um, moving forward with an investigation form and we don't firm and we don't, we don't have resolution. This is several weeks. We don't know where we are in the progress. Maybe we don't have the right firm.
Well, that, that's not in the motion. Well, the, the, the firm that was chosen was the first choice of Dr. Galian's attorneys as well. Um, and so I feel confident in the firm that was chosen. And I think, um, that's what I think.
I have a water. Well, just, um, if we're written, if we are going to redo the motion and the motion is to authorize, you know, counsel to consult with Dr. Galian, if something else, if a new firm were to come out of that, I think it would seem appropriate, would it not? The motion isn't to use the same firm, it's to authorize the investigation. So if it's found that the current investigation is not going correctly, then they should be able to choose a new firm.
Well, I think that would be between the two attorneys.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify, though, for the record, that that could be an outcome.
All right, we are ready for the question, Ms. Bowles.
Madam Chair, you made a statement.
Oh, excuse me.
You, your statement, Madam Chair, was that it is our responsibility to respond to an email if we get it. Madam Chair, we receive many emails, um, from employees and they are directed back to their direct supervisor, to ER, and then HR. This particular email was unprecedented. We responded to an email and we've never done that before. There's an employee that was terminated that emailed us and we did nothing. There's another employee, employee that was terminated, emailed us, and we did nothing. This employee emailed us and we went into a full-blown investigation. We need to, we need to do right by Dr. Galian. This district needs to have a protocol in place. We cannot be selective on who we're going to respond to.
Um, and that has been addressed by Ms. Huggins and, um, Mr. Douglas, and we will call for the question.
We call for the question.
Okay.
We don't like debate.
Exactly. Thank you, Parliamentary. We were in the middle of a debate and they called for a question.
I thought that was, everyone had finished.
To say, to move this to committee, I'm sorry, move this to HR, yeah.
All right, we, we will hold, um, the vote. Mr. Grabowski, you said you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, uh, because I, I think in, in transparency, I think the public is entitled to know why I'm making the action I'm making. I mean, so I think in the, this debate, um, so this may be an unpopular action and it may be a, a first. Um, I know in, in the state system, with our HR system, when we have, and I've actually seen this involved, where you have a complaint filed against the executive director, um, our policy is very clear. It doesn't go through HR, it doesn't go through anybody in the staff because the executive director oversees all that people. So the state has enacted this procedure that these individuals can go straight to Columbia and then an independent investigation is started by Columbia. Now, I agree that if we do not have that type of policy, but I have one question for all of you.
Please, uh, respect the person speaking so everyone can hear. Thank you.
It's very simple, you know, um, would you have me walk away from when a teacher, principal, high-ranking members files a complaint against an individual that I was responsible for as part of a group, as the board in hiring, who reports to me as the board, reports to the board? Would you not have me conduct an independent investigation? Because the due process is not, the due process is not just for the potential victim, but it's also the due process is for Dr. Galian. And that's why the independent investigation was conducted by the group in which Dr. Galian reports to. So.
Um, excuse me, but we, we are not accepting public comment. We are accepting discussion from the board. Ms. Ms., um, Ms. Kep, um, is there a con? Is there, are there any other comments, any other new comments? Ms. Dr. Temple?
Go ahead.
Dr. Temple, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr. Temple. I'm going to, go ahead, Dr. Temple. Go ahead. Would you like me to read it for you?
Yeah.
I'm going, I'm going to give an educator's perspective on this. When our students get into conflict with each other, we don't encourage each other to fight it out. Instead, we use skills like conflict resolution and restoration, restorative practices. This act of the board didn't use, um, any kind of intervention practices. It, instead, it took out the sledgehammer and it made things even worse. If HR does not have restorative practice tools and, or conflict resolution tools in place for adult conflict, then we need to immediately pursue getting them in place because we cannot continue like this. It seems to me that we're going to need a progressive discipline plan for our adults.
And that can be addressed by HR. Thank you. Um, any other comments?
Yes, Waters. You know, it, it just seems to me that at this point in the game, we're in a very different place than we were two weeks ago. We know all, you know, all-
place than we were two weeks ago. We know all, you know, all has been said about the status of the investigation. But the other piece here is that really the claim has come out into the public. And and at this point, it's sort of public knowledge that it's a claim by a single employee about a job, and that there actually isn't anything according to statute that is hostile, at least about what's in the media. And so it really feels at this point, there's very little to investigate. And so even in, you know, if we're, if 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 my position on this is going to fail, which is fine, because we all vote in the way that we vote, that those who are pro this motion should also be pro the expediency, because ultimately, this should not, if it is truly to protect Dr. Gallion, and we've got a system working so ineffectively, to the point that if one chief isn't here, we can't get a clear answer on a process, that we need the leader of this district to be working, and not sitting at home making $275,000 a year. I would like the majority to be very earnest about making sure that this is wrapped, this investigation to have take, to take 30 days, which is the projection, when he'd been at work for about 60, is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Well, and and we aren't in charge. So again, that's a question with the eternal.
Madam Chair, if I may.
I may only make a You're now calling for the question.
Madam Chair, can you hear Ms. Watley? She's asked to get, she's asked to be recognized a couple of times.
Cannot hear her, but we Call for the question.
I'm, I'm not gonna enter into more debate. I just want to point out that currently the district is going through litigation with Dr. Gallion, and I think that the discussion is dangerous, considering that. But I'm fine with calling for the question. I just have been trying, and Keith made the other point that I was trying to make.
All right.
It's just prudent to have an outside investigation to preserve the integrity.
Ms. Bowles, do you need Ms. Lee to vote orally? Mr. Grabowski, if you'll vote, and Ms. Bailey, if you'll vote.
Yay.
My voice. Yay. Okay. And the motion passes. By four. We are on top. To be. Is there a motion to place the superintendent on paid administrative leave pending the outcome of the investigation?
I move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Watley. And is there a second?
Mr. Kelly seconded.
And Mr. Kelly seconds.
I would like to debate this issue.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We'll open it for discussion. We, since the motion is a positive motion, we need a pro comment first.
I would like to speak, Ms.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe, as Ginn stated, that we put him on administrative leave for the protection of himself, as well as the district and the person filing the complaint. And I think that it is a good move for the district to do, considering all involved. So that's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Roberson has asked to be recognized?
So far, Dr. Gallion has not been protected. Dr. Gallion, the employee does not report directly to Dr. Gallion. There's not any reason to believe that him coming to work to run this district while this investigation is going on cannot be done concurrently. We are paying him to sit at home when he can be here working. There's no, there's no need to protect anyone. This is not an egregious, it's work responsibilities. There's not no stealing of monies, there's not a molestation, it's work responsibilities. No one needs to be protected. The person doesn't report directly to him.
Is there
Madam Chair.
Come, comment on the pro?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's prudent to place Dr. Gallion on unpaid leave. I've consulted both with District HR, as well as other outside HR professionals for a third-party or unbiased opinion. Every single HR professional I've spoken to, now three total, have said that a matter like a sexual harassment, or a hostile work environment type complaint are egregious, and a typical, very, very standard response is paid leave pending the outcome of the investigation. I think it's also very important to point out, the reason that this is good for Dr. Gallion is because this allows due process to take place, where true investigations and true interviews can happen. Obviously, as someone who reports to Dr. Gallion, if other staff are are being interviewed about him, and he's in the room with them or in the office, that is a very obvious intimidation tactic, or not a tactic on his part, and it would be intimidating. Therefore, the paid leave is to protect both Dr. Gallion, the employees, and the authenticity and best outcome of the investigation, so that it can be, uncover the truth.
All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Roberson, I have to recognize everybody once before I can start again. Dr. Temple, you had your hand up?
An email triggered this complaint. If this would happen in a school, I don't think we would be moving in this direction. I mean, one teacher complaint in an email would not put the principal on administrative leave, and then interrupt, disrupt the organization of the school. This action of the board has disrupted the district. When you get letters from so many educators and so many principals, you know something is wrong. Principals and teachers do not speak out generally for fear, but they have spoken to us. And I have to say that Dr. Gallion has politely come to this board several times, asking for adjustments in his organizational chart. He's given us good information as to why he's wanted to make this. But we have a motion that was made in May of, of May 18, that continues to perpetuate this problem. And this board continues to say no, when he is trying to make some adjustments to the organizational chart. The employee who filed the complaint being paid, and still has the ability to do the job, and they do not have to be in the same room together to do the same job. So this is just, this is over the top. And I'm afraid that if we set up this president at the top, this is going to filter down to the schools, and we again will have disruption. Is that what we want for public education? I don't think so.
Ma'am, I just have to object to this conversation.
Please wait, please.
But there's litigation, there's litigation that's pending. And this conversation is addressing litigation that's pending. This is dangerous.
Is there, Ms. Waters?
I think, I think that, I mean, the thing that keeps coming up for me is that all things are permissible, but not all things are beneficial. And while we can put an employee on administrative leave while something is being investigated, is that the best thing that we can do? If we stop with, you know, the jargon, and we really distill this down to what is actually occurring. Dr. Gallion didn't slap this person. He didn't threaten her physically. He actually hardly even has to interact with this person. There's an and, and either one of them could be allowed to work from home, or not attend, be in the same meetings. There are so many possibilities, and we're going to the ultimate. And my question is, for what reason? And I would truly like an answer on, for what reason in this particular situation, given the facts that we read, given the facts that we read in that, in that document, which is now in the public, what indication would we have to believe that he or this person is in danger if he's working? There was nothing in the letter that said an outright action occurred in the direction of the employee. It was all about a person's interpretation, a feeling, not an outright action. And so for that reason, we don't have a reason to believe that the, anyone is in danger. And so I don't believe that this is for his protection. And I'd like someone to answer the question, why take such a leap when the initial actions were so, I don't even know the word, benign?
So I think the, the action taken was to protect the integrity of the investigation, that on September the 25th was a unanimous vote. And that, that is my reason to support, one of my reasons to support this motion. Dr., let's see, Dr. Temple, you spoke. Mr. Grabowski.
And I have, I have to agree. I think it's the integrity of the investigation. There's so much that that we do not know. You're all, everybody jumps on a lot of speculation. This is an environmental issue in which an environment has been created. I agree with Ms. Waters. I think I'm a little, you know, I'm not upset, but a little confused as to why this is taking so long. I never would have anticipated it would, we'd be into week three of an investigation, but it was agreed upon by the two councils, and we have a process, and it's got to play out. And once that report comes out, you know, then everybody then, at that point, can talk freely. But until that report comes out, you're dealing with a bunch of speculation. So I think the process has started.
Ms. Roberson?
Can everybody be quiet, please? It's hard to hear up here.
Ms. Rob, Ms. Roberson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I again will go back to this district and HR. We pay a lot of people six figures, and I just want to go back to selective process. We have a person that's sitting at home, being paid a lot of money because of an allegation. We have people sitting in positions that have pending investigations and lawsuits. What is the difference? We have to be careful of what we are doing. We are being selective. One person sits at home with an allegation, another person works with a lawsuit. Someone from ER needs to speak to this. What is the protocol? How do one person get to sit at home with an allegation, and another get to sit in a position with a lawsuit? Can someone from ER or HR explain the difference in allegation and a lawsuit?
Ms. Roberson, I think that
We're in debate. I get to ask the question.
I think that Ms. Huggins and Mr. Douglas have answered that, that they are going to review it.
This is a different question.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Grabowski, I ask for a response from HR or ER, not from a colleague.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Right. Ms. Roberson, parliamentarians said that we can refer your question for, to the district for a response when, when they have one.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Grabowski?
Thank you for answering my question. How can I vote and make an informed decision when my, my question and answer is being deferred? Again, we have someone here from ER.
To abstain? You may abstain.
No.
Madam Chair.
My constituents, my constituents would want me to vote.
Madam Chair, can you, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Mr. Kelly, is that your voice I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
My, my, oh, we, my question is still
On the floor.
Right.
They're, they're working on it.
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I'd like to point out that it's very, it's obvious to, to, it's obvious to me that a person in the chain of command of Dr. Gallion cannot possibly investigate Dr. Gallion unbiasedly. That person that would, that would do that investigation obviously is going to be swayed one way or the other, either out of fear for their job, or preferential toward the, the person being investigated, in this case, Dr. Gallion. Therefore, the outside counsel makes a lot of sense. And the paid leave is for the exact same reason. It's for the integrity of this investigation. And to the, to the point about lawsuits versus allegations, the situations are not the same at all, because one person is the chief executive of a district, and the other is not.
Mr. Douglas.
Mrs. McKinney, Mr. Douglas and I are going to step out one second.
If you could give us just one minute, please, so we can hear.
Mrs. McKinney, Mr. Douglas and I are going to step out and see if we can get on the phone with the Chief of HR and our legal counsel, just to
Madam Chair, I have a over here. While we figure out
Ms. Waters wants to speak, and we would like to be able to hear her.
While we figure out a, a response, or a way to respond from Ms. Roberson's, I'd like to go back to the original question that I raised about the process. If Dr. Gallion is going to continue to be on paid administrative leave, I think it's, it's very important that the board be very clear about what that means, because I find it highly inappropriate that an attorney that, I'm, I guess I'm supposed to believe, just decided to send an email to him that he was out of order for being on campus, that, but did so without any correction. And so if he's going to be on paid administrative leave, he needs to understand what he can and cannot do. And let me also say that whether he's on paid administrative leave or not, by contract, he is responsible for this district. And so we need to be clear about also the implications of what we decide here about what he can and cannot do. People are still going to need to be in touch with him about certain matters, particularly if they, if they arise to that level. And he's going to need to be able to be free to respond to keep himself out of legal jeopardy, because he still is the steward of this district.
Right. So I hope these two things will answer your questions. Excuse me. The Deputy Superintendent of Schools, this is in the contract and job description, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools will serve as Acting Superintendent of Schools in the absence of the Superintendent of Schools. And then administrative, the form letter from our HR for administrative leave states that until the matter is resolved, you are not to be present on any Charleston County School District property without advanced permission from the principal or department head. You are urged not to discuss your case with colleagues, parents, and students. You may call any time to check on the status of the investigation. Do we have that? This is our HR form letter. Do we have administrative leave, and that's the, the only, and so what? Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Bloodgood have conversed back and forth for the definition.
Sure, sure. But that's administrative leave. Is there a difference between paid administrative leave and administrative leave?
That I don't know.
I just
The difference is getting paid.
The reason that I'm asking is because if someone is on paid administrative leave, it typically happens when it's more likely that they'll come back to work. When someone's on When someone's on administrative leave, it's normally the, the, the opposite. And so I, I'm just, I believe that in there, and I heard somebody speak out of turn, and so I'll address that. There is a difference. The language is there for a reason. And we need to get clear on whether he is precluded from being on campus because whether there's an acting superintendent or not, by contract, he's still responsible.
Right. And I think that the attorneys are talking to each other about that because there is confusion.
Yeah. When can we expect an update in clarity?
I don't know.
We, we have to be able to hold somebody's feet to the, we're paying a lot of people to be involved and we can't get any answers.
Right. So we can reach out to Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Bloodgood.
And, and just one more clarifying question. Why is Ms. Blackburn continuing to be involved?
Because it deals with Dr. Galian's contract.
But she's not a, his contract attorney. We paid her for a service and now we have general counsel. I would feel a lot more comfortable if Mr. Johnson, in his capacity as, you know, interim or acting general counsel, would be involved in this and that Ms. Blackburn would step out because we did not, we did not hire her for that purpose.
The, um, there was an, um, but when Ms. Bloodgood con, and we'll, we'll have to maybe refer to Ms. Palmer, but it's my understanding when Ms. Bloodgood reached out to her, uh, general counsel, uh, did expand the scope for Ms. Blackburn since she was familiar with the contract.
Sure. But since Ms. Paylor is no longer general counsel, and I'm not sure why Ms. Palmer's here either, since she's not general counsel, I, I, there's just, there's a lot of lawyers doing a lot of stuff, some of whom have been fired.
Mr. Johnson requested, since he was not familiar with the background of the case, for Saxon Stump to be here to answer legal questions.
Madam Chair.
Johnson's, Mr. Johnson was asked if he could attend and he said he was not familiar with the case, so it would be better for them. Mr. Kelly.
I, I'd like to point out that policy BDG precludes general counsel from being involved in this.
General, uh, uh, I'm sorry, we're not going to do that.
Okay, I'll read it to you if needed, in the event of a dispute between the board and the superintendent. The general counsel may not represent the interests of either.
I actually told you about that policy, Mr. Kelly. So I know.
The hiring of an outside counsel to represent the board.
But I, I must respond to that because that, that's misinformation and it's very disinformation. The general counsel in question would actually be Saxon and Stump because they were general counsel when the action happened. Mr. Johnson just got here two minutes ago. He's not involved in this. So he's actually the only person who could be trusted. And please don't pull policy to me that I shared with, with, with the public for the first time myself.
I'm not sure what you're talking about when it comes to sharing with the public, but I, it's not false information. I just read to our board policy.
In this situation was when I quoted it. And Mr. Johnson is new to the situation. Saxon Stump is actually the, the only firm that lacks integrity in this situation.
So our board policy says general counsel, it does not say Saxon Stump.
Mr. Douglas? Or Mrs. Huckins?
Mrs. McKinney, we, we were not able to, to.
We, we. Please, so we can have Ms. Roberson's question answered. If you'd be quiet so we can hear it.
Mrs. McKinney, we were not able to reach the, the chief of HR. So we are going, um, we're, we've, we have the issues that we've heard this morning. We're going to counsel with him and general counsel on this matter.
Thank you. Get back to the board in short order.
Thank you.
In short order.
Thank you. So.
Ms. Roberson.
Okay, so I, I have.
Excuse me, please, I'd like to hear Ms. Roberson.
Before I call for the table of the vote, I just want to ask this question. Um, if, if, I believe Mr. Kelly referenced, um, people who work for Dr. Galian not being able to, um, conduct an investigation and, and anything of the sorts. My question is, who gave Dr. Galian that letter that you just read?
This, this is, this was not given to Dr. Galian. This is a generic letter from HR.
He didn't get it. How does it, in effect?
I was asked what, what administrative leave meant, and so I was answering the question.
If he didn't ever get that letter, then that doesn't.
I'm, I'm sorry. Someone gave Dr. Galian's attorney this letter dated October 10th. Who gave Dr. Galian's attorney this letter dated October 10th? Telling him not to speak to anyone, not to go on properties. Who gave this letter?
Who signed it?
Sherry Blackburn.
Okay.
Who's her authority? Why does, why is Dr., why is Sherry Blackburn representing us as a board? We never, we never hired Sherry Blackburn to hire us other than to negotiate his contract. This let, she cannot do this and who gave her the authority? Someone had, Sherry Blackburn did not wake up and decide to write that letter to Dr. Blackburn, to Dr. Galian. Someone had to have told Sherry Blackburn to do this letter. Who gave her that authority?
Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman.
The question was.
I am a trustee and I'm asking, who gave? I'm sorry, Ms. Watley.
Just a minute.
I have the floor.
I, we, we, we have our time being able to, we're not being.
Watley, Ms. Roberson is asking a question.
She's asked many questions.
I, I understand. Ms. Ms. Palmer.
Asked questions when I was recognized.
For us.
Thank you. I was recognized by the chair. I had the floor.
And you take the floor even when you're not recognized by the chair.
I've asked Ms. Palmer a question.
And, Mr. Kelly, can you repeat the question?
Can you repeat your question?
Dr. Blackburn, Dr. Galian received a letter dated October 10th. If no one under him can tell him anything, who gave him this letter? And who authorized this letter being generated? What was the importance of this letter?
I can't answer that question. I have not seen that letter.
So that is a question that we will have to ask Ms. Blackburn and get back to you on.
I call for the table of the motion.
I second.
Parliamentarian said that, um, tabling this will not change the situation because he is currently on paid administrative leave. So the option is to vote yes or no.
No, this is a new motion.
Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, Dr., Ms. Roberson is running the entire show. Can one of us please have a chance to speak?
Let's, let's, if we may, hear from the parliamentarian first and then I'll recognize you, Ms. Watley.
Thank you.
The motion to table is not in order at this time. Motion to table is a motion to put something aside to, to do other business and then bring it back. This is the only item on the table, I mean, on the, uh, on the agenda right now. So what is in, and also too, Dr. Galian is on paid administration leave now. So to table would not change that matter at all. So for the trustees, the action is to either vote yes to continue to have him on paid administrative leave or to vote no, in which case that would, I don't know, it would be, but no, it would not happen. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Douglas.
All the trustees who are voting, do you understand, am I, have been clear about what the, the votes are, yes versus no?
Ms. Wat, Ms., I promise, Ms. Wat, Ms. Watley.
I, I just wanted to, again, point out that the district is currently facing litigation. Much of the direction that this, um, I can't even call it a conversation at this point, but much of the comments that are being made, um, I, in my opinion, I believe, uh, general counsel will agree is going to make it harder for the district with this litigation because it speaks to items that were named in the litigation. I would like for us to go ahead and get back on track with the motion that is on the floor and let's stay focused on the motion that is on the floor. And, and Madam Chairman, I just asked, please call for the vote.
Can I respond to that? Cause it wasn't quite accurate. So just, just to be clear about what's at hand, there is no lawsuit. There's a declarative judgment. There is an injunction which actually doesn't pertain to this at all. It pertains to Dr. Galian being allowed to do his work when he gets back. It's actually not an injunction about paid administrative leave, but about all of the obstruction to him doing his job. So discussing this doesn't impact that at all and we can debate.
Any other? Are we ready?
I, I'm having a hard time understanding this. If me, if our meeting of nine twenty-five was a FOIA violation and that put Dr. Galian on paid administrative leave, he's been on paid administrative leave, why are we continuing that? And then this motion doesn't make any sense to me.
It is a, it was a questionable, not a determined FOIA violation.
Why are we meeting today?
To, to make, um, to address it and make it, um, clear that there is no FOIA violation. The motions and the background material are stated, uh, for the public and we are voting for the public. Mr. Kelly, you, you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. I, I wanted to respond to the, to the statement about, uh, Ms. Blackburn. On nine twenty-five, the board voted unanimously to give Ms. Blackburn the authority to negotiate with Dr. Galian's lawyers around this investigation. Uh, and that was a nine oh unanimous vote. Therefore, she was again retained by this board to interact with Dr. Galian's attorneys for this entire situation. Again, because our policy does not allow general counsel to act in that manner.
All right, Ms.
Um, before I ask my question, let me respond to Mr. Kelly. This board allowed the chair to engage with Ms. Black, with Ms. Blackburn to select a firm. It was, it was explicit, just to select a firm. That's it. One thing, not to go through this entire process. Now, my question, um, Ms. Parliamentarian. Why can we not table this because there's too many unanswered questions as far as ER and HR is concerned about this paid administration leave that we put him on? I don't believe that we can make an informed decision about paid administration leave when we don't know the definition of what it really is.
So the dilemma that you all are in is that the first meeting that you, where you did this in original business was considered not, I mean, was questionable about whether or not you followed FOIA practices. So we are doing the meeting again today and it is now a meeting in which you are able to vote however you want to vote. You don't have to vote the exact same way you did on the 25th. We've got to recognize that the superintendent is now on paid administrative leave based on that decision on the 25th. So if you were to vote, if you were to vote yes, he would continue on paid administrative leave. If you were to vote no, the implication would be he would come off of administrative leave. If you are questioning what to do, you, it is possible to re, to postpone this motion to another date, more than likely would be the next board meeting, which would be October 23, right? In which, in which case, if you were to, if you were to refer or postpone to October 23, that would be a majority would have to vote for that. And then, um, the implication of that would be somebody would be doing some, some lack of invest, I mean, investigation for lack of a better word on terms of the, um, issues around this. Okay, is that clear?
Basically, that would give ER and HR time to get the information.
Yeah.
So I will call for the question.
But wait, if, if somebody wa, let me also say, if somebody wants to, if a trustee wants to refer the motion to October, to postpone to October 23, you would need to do it now before you vote on the motion.
I move to postpone the question to October 23rd.
Second.
Wait, didn't we already have a motion pending on the floor?
Ms. Waters, seconded by Dr. Temple, does a postponement motion require discussion or just a vote?
Wait, we, didn't we already have a motion pending on the floor?
The postponement motion comes first.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so for this motion, the only thing that would be debatable would be, because it could be amendable, to change the date from October 23 to something else.
All right. Do you have the wording, Ms. Bowles, or would you like Ms. Waters to repeat?
Mr. Kelly has his hand up.
Let, let me hear from Ms. Bowles first, please. Do I recognize Mr. Kelly or do we?
Mr. Kelly.
Actually, I just have a question for the parliamentarian. If this vote gets postponed, does that change anything with Dr. Galian's current status of being on paid leave until?
He would continue, he would continue on paid leave until the 20th, until the outcome of the meeting on the 23rd and what's decided there.
Thank you.
So we'll call for the.
Do we, I'm sorry, do I need to amend to add the fact that we need to have HR weigh in? Cause I want to make sure we don't show up on the 23rd and end up in the same situation.
We have that assurance that they're, they're.
It's my, it's my understanding they will get the answer to us as quickly as possible.
I want to go ahead and put it in the motion. If I can amend the language, is, I mean, am I allowed to do that?
So what I think would be cleaner at this stage is if you could make a motion after that to give directive.
Okay, I can do that.
I'm not in favor of extending this anything longer than.
It's not a discussion.
Do you need Ms. Bailey's voice vote? Ms. Bailey?
No.
And the motion does not pass. So now we vote on, um, the motion that is on the floor um, to, uh, which is to be, to place the superintendent on paid administrative leave pending the outcome of the investigation.
Ms. McKinney, Ms. Bowles is trying to get you.
Oh, Ms. Bailey, I'm sorry. The motion, Ms. Bailey, to place the superintendent on paid administrative leave into the outcome of the investigation, how do you vote?
Yes.
Is that everybody, Ms. Bowles? And the motion passes. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the board of trustees' meeting?
I move.
Second.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move.
Move second.
Ms. Watley, is there a second?
Mr. Kelly?
Second by Mr. Kelly. All in favor, rise.